Now, I'll have to state Memphis.
That is being a party council. Funding for my twenty-four twenty-three order. Unfortunately, it's been by the United States somewhere. And we probably.
Councilmember Tandev. Councilmember Colomore.
Joined by soon present.
Councilmember Quitner. Councilmember Lesnow. Councilmember Forner. Mayor Casanelli. And we have Councilmember Tandev arriving at six oh two.
Uh, counselor. Colomore. Would you identify yourself on your computer, please?
I cannot, I cannot hear you. I only have my, uh, I'm, I have to borrow my computer. I have no idea. I have my cellphone blocked. And no sound on my cellphone. And I only have.
You're, uh, now what I'm trying to say, you're identifying with E N.
I cannot understand that word you said.
Uh, Administrator Bella, are you able to read?
Oh, I might be able to.
Okay, let's try that one and I'll, uh.
I am.
You're okay.
I'll change the volume. Okay. Uh. Let me block.
You're okay.
Okay. I have no idea what to do. I cannot he, I cannot if I lower the volume.
Turn off your phone.
Uh, I don't know if I can hear you.
There are.
Let's try it.
It sounds as if there are two devices in your room on the same zoom call. And for that to work without feedback.
Uh, let's see, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we hear you. I'm trying to tell you how make this work. They're going to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
You must take one of the devices and turn the audio off. One device plus mute that same device on zoom. And then that device will not interfere with the other device in your room.
Boy, you guys are hard to understand.
Uh, that is because you did not set it up correctly. Get rid of one device.
I, I can understand you very clearly, Mister, um. Yes. Mister Spredeman, I can hear you very clearly.
You'll be okay.
Try it off until you need them.
Um, I would like to modify the agenda. I would like to. Discussion that another. So I'm gonna make my motion to modify to admit to accept the agenda as intended.
This is I, I'm not paying.
Then this is spread.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not in question. The poll. Sustained. We did. On consent.
Motion to approve the consent.
Set. Um, I don't. That was now that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Both. Very good so bad. That reward. So. Do we have anyone's cap here? Larry, you want to have anything to report?
Mayor Casanelli, you are not clear. You, uh, you are not clear at all. Uh, Miss, uh, Councilman Lesnow is clear. You are not.
Sorry.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, uh, Larry, you have a question. You chairman.
Are we supposed to? Are, um, okay.
For the Revisionation Committee, uh, we have, we had my first meeting last week. Um, we discussed a number of things. But we have not yet concluded on survey since. Since we are, I'll be back now compiling all the information and, uh, hopefully, next week, next week or another, I don't know, share. First, we're trying to do, do the right, well, uh, that's. Uh, we're also working on a block. Team. And we're working with the I M A. Tell something. About buying that, so, should be good, good turnout. Uh, we're working on the project of, uh, a prototype for, uh, receptacles. On, I've got a screen here and, uh, Tom is working on a, with the high school, that prototype. Um, I'm working with Juneau at H three. Um, we talked about funding, um, some funding towards that. Uh, that project. Um, and we're also working with, uh, Juneau, kind of coming out, hopefully meeting with us. And, uh, our team, uh, city council folks. And we hope, is that chapter where we are, we need to go through that. Something I asked you. Uh, we're going to have a couple of representatives attend the seminar. And, uh, Vancouver, and the, um, and, uh, and number of sessions at the table, that we wait to leave, look at Waco. And then we bring that home and, uh. That's right.
Thanks, Larry. About, all right, of course, before you stop, how many responses did you get in the survey about?
Oh, fair. That's, uh, that's. Did the other ones. Good, good. Thank you. Um. Posting of the I M A.
Hey, guys. The I M A is working on our surveying here in the summer. We're doing the Saturday market. We have, not every Saturday, but we have some volunteers living down, sort of. Created surveys, but also need to combine. The, right now, we just ask one question every week. It's a different question as it relates to the creative surveys, but we'll also eventually, you know, tie it into a digital survey that. Gather the data that we need. Creative script, the LTAC for proposal and things like the down, you know, more person, right, and things like that. And you're just, you know, as we went through the busy season, do the, this surveying, we have some great responses. We have a couple volunteers that are helping us gather that data, so we'll be recording. Be a whole summer in office. And then, as you mentioned, we're gonna help with the block party and collaborate with Dirk and. Please to bring that together. And then slow drag will be coming out before you know it, so that's, um, broad weekend that Friday. And we do need some volunteers, so if you're interested in helping, then reach out to the fire department. They, they could maybe be more involved because we, um, physically enable people to stand on their feet and be alert and. Help with the actual, the way that the slow drive works. So it's very, uh, a physical job and. Other stuff. Looking forward to that, and then we'll be on Seamline Day while we're. And then we don't, the I M A does not meet in July or August, um, where the general, uh, will be back.
Um, council report. I'm sort of. Nothing very important. Yeah, we're, Colomore.
Um, I attended, um, uh, a seminar on the, on the role of the planning commission. I also attended, um, P P R Zoom meetings and, uh, let me see. And, um, P C I. S meetings and also on a special, um, event yesterday to, uh, acknowledge Ann Reeves and the hair work in the community. Attended a Port of Illawarra meeting and, um, interacted with several, um, several of the constituents, concerned constituents. And also, I spent a couple of hours, a, a couple of days trying to figure out and find my way around the, the hearing, um, the hearing commissioner and how that works, because that is one of the items that have been very much, uh, in the minds of all the, of most, I'll say ninety percent of all the constituents I have spoken. And one of the things that I was trying to do, uh, and I'm completely, completely lost in this one. In regards to the D J H C C application. People keep on asking me when and how to put their concerns before the hearing examiners. And I thought at the last meeting on the tenth, um, as per the letter in that, in the packet that was dated July fifth twenty-three from the city, that the city had determined the application to be complete. And moved it to the hearing examiner. And I was wondering if that is correct. Can somebody answer that for me?
No, that's not, that's not correct.
Um, no, uh, as I've explained before, now that the application has been determined to be complete, the, uh, materials will now be reviewed by the planner. And, uh, any additional information that they need will be requested from the applicant. Uh, so they can prepare their final staff report. Uh, right now, we're currently in a public comment period for the CIPA checklist. We, per state law, cannot schedule a hearing examiner, public hearing for a public comment until we have completed the fourteen day comment period for the CIPA checklist. Once that's complete, then we will schedule the public hearing with the hearing examiner. And a complete staff report or, uh, planning report and review will be provided to the public and the hearing examiner.
Yeah, many of their concerns was, how do they do that? How do they express their comments and writing by email, by snail mail? To who? And how much longer before they can put it before the hearing examiner in person? And if they can do so, if they have not, um, previously submitted the questions, what happens? And what was the timeline? And I understand now that there's fourteen days from which date from, uh, until August the second. Is that what I received in one of the emails that I directed to, to, uh, to the mayor? Is, is that when it ends on this, on August the second?
The public comment period for the CIPA checklist will end on August second.
Okay, what happens if they have not been able to submit their, their comments because they don't know where to do it and how to do it?
Our public notices include exactly how they submit their comments to us. They can submit them in person. They can submit them in writing. Uh, they can email them.
And that is to the city? Not to the hearing examiner, to the city?
No, we have not moved to the hearing examiner yet. This is a CIPA checklist, public comment period.
So, um, I just would, uh, ask for the benefit of all those that are questioning it. If so, please, uh, for future reference, it can be put down, um, on paper and, um, let's see, um, uh, step by a step. And the, what the procedure for this process is and make it available at City Hall. And a list that people can just go to rather than be fishing around the Illawarra Municipal Code, the R C Ws and the WACs, because that's what I had to do for more than two days. And I'm still not completely clear until now that you are giving me that explanation. So that would be very much appreciated. And so.
The public has been notified of their process by both posting in the local newspaper, posting at the post office, posting at the Port of Illawarra office, posting at the City of Illawarra City Hall, and by mail of a three hundred foot buffer surrounding the property.
Okay, none of that was included into the water bills as I see it.
No, it's not customary to do that.
Oh, and because this issue, um, has created so much interest, um, I would suggest that if something is going to be done in the future, then to include it.
I welcome the interest from the public because I have not received any comments yet. So if anybody is interested, I welcome that to City Hall.
Margaret, we have people calling City Hall that have questions. We can answer them for them, please. And also, you can tell them if they wanted to do anything, there's, if you go to the, to the website and you go to building and finding, and there's a whole quiz here, if you look up there, I don't know if you can see it, I'm holding it in my hands. It has everything that you need, the timeline and everything.
Well, not. Not everybody's computer savvy, but I will tell them to call the city and get the information.
But just to keep also, will you test this through? Okay, is there anything else? Check, one, two. I've got it now. Fourteen. Well. I don't know, Margaret, then what? That's a little weird. Problems with the middle, we're on this after this, after the meeting, as we see, we're just trying for this, the first day we use these lines, uh, that's a little long.
What about, I guess we're close on the line. I mean, I don't think so. No.
Okay.
Which then is, we may have to discipline ourselves to turn our microphones off except for the. Which will be, which will not be easy for us, but may give us the best result.
We do some.
Yeah, yeah, too many.
No, it's not, unfortunately, uh, no, that's not the issue. We have these, uh, six inches of part all on trying to get feedback, uh, during our demo period. Uh, the next phase, we have our, the, uh, audio computer that we contract, this purple protector, we need this via Zoom. Uh, so we'll get feedback on, feedback on feedback, uh, and we'll make, uh, make changes there. So for our first, uh, order of business was to approve the acoustics in the room, uh, with a microphone, for, you know, pretty good job of that. Uh, and then we would love to get the audio directly from microphones into Zoom without going through the owl. Uh, we are still looking into robust solutions for that.
Yeah, with that said, anything else, Margaret?
No, that will be all. Thank you.
That was real quick, Eric.
Thank you. Uh, I must have been saying that in the report, but I'm gonna piggyback on the Council of the Republicans. Concerned. Very capable to read, um, part of the, 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 uh, who we have. Um. Anything that the public is departing with, I'll, it'll be right there, it'll be. Yes, it's mostly dull. Yes, there's a lot of pro eight that is. Um. Pretty small section of, of our day, of the paper, and that, that's where you find, um, all the things that the public has known as, uh, thanks for talking.
John, I'm sorry again, you are completely unreadable. And, uh, if I didn't show up in person, it's because I was exposed to somebody with COVID and I didn't want to give it to anybody in case that I have it. Otherwise, I would be there sharing with you everything that I have or might have. So it would, it would be nice if maybe get, trying to get a clearer sound. A closer to your mic, maybe? I don't know.
What if I were Jack last night?
Wow, you cannot, you are not understanding that.
Yeah, you and I are at the same distance, or we're at the same distance.
Councilor.
Thanks. Uh, a few weeks ago, I attended a roundtable discussion with our Congresswoman, uh, hosted by Small Fly Fish regarding public access to commercial and public timberland. And stats we can take a little on the federal level to increase access there. A few other local community members were present and voiced their concerns. And also, uh, the Congresswoman and her staff, sympathetic and eager to work for greater access, uh, for visitors and residents of our area. So I was thankful for that opportunity. Uh, John Billups also wanted me to let you all know that he was invited by Congresswoman Lucy Campores, to speak to the congressional opinion on small business, his plans to be ignoring in Washington, D.C. This is a great opportunity for global businesses, their capability to challenge and see another business owner's face here in Pacific County and other rural communities around our country. He'll be speaking about e-commerce, uh, artificial intelligence, childcare, housing, and outdoor recreation. Uh, I would, we're hearing more about his experience, new returns. Uh, and tomorrow's planning commission meeting, there's an opportunity, uh, for the commission to select a chairperson to lead the planning commission and their meetings, and as a result, add additional autonomy for the commission, and for Administrator Bella to shift her focus to more strategic endeavors for the city. I'm supportive of this operational change for the commission and look forward to welcoming reports from the chairperson in future council meetings. Uh, I M B A, the International Mountain Bicycle Association, uh, their trails group will be out here in the week of August fourteen. We're hiring out dates for stakeholder meetings and site visits. Uh, brushing of the property of the roads, uh, is start next week, uh, from Cody, uh, from Strange and Strutman. Uh, I'll be out there with our forester for a bit, taking a look at the areas that they'll be working on and how that would better open up access to the property. Uh, I'll also be co-presenting with the Trust for Public Land at the National Land Conservation Conference this September in Fort Worth. Uh, the presentation is titled Community Standard Conservation: Two Successful Case Studies of Creating Community Forests. Obviously, speaking about the city's success, uh, in completing the Civilian Act provision earlier this year and our plans for the property. I'll be joined by, uh, a, a organization from the East Coast, uh, that's had a similar success for it this year.
George Porter.
I really don't have much. Uh, I do want to apologize to the council and the citizens here that I missed the last meeting. I had some, uh, science problems. And individuals respond back to, uh, our administrator regarding. On my computer, no, their shows, it just shows the person name responding to the administrator. So, I don't know. I didn't like it, I didn't think it was. So I apologize for that.
Okay, Mary, report.
Um, first thing, after the last meeting, I attended those five county trails, uh, we, uh, my coastal counties are getting together to, um, go around some of the game old five. You know, it's, uh, Pacific, uh, Grace Harbor, Lewis. Long, long. Look back. No, I.
Thurston and Kitzap. Thurston and Kitzap.
Yeah, Thurston, Kitzap. They're all, we're all getting together to work on developing a trail system within, within all these, all five counties. And how we connect the trails that they already have, or they've gone. One of the things that they're working on is one major project in each one of the counties. And, uh, we have, this county has, uh, at least two really nice projects we're on going. One, one, what this group is trying to do as one of this major, one of them bring together, so it connects to the other county, the kind of trail going out, um, to one of the other counties, we started there. Only one county. Thinking of that, I think, there's a big pot of money that, uh, we can draw on to do this. Um. Uh, my next meeting was Southwest Water and Regional Transportation Finally Organization. Um, it was typical. Mostly everything in, in that one, just with, uh, the other counties, they're trying to get our votes and everything together. It's, um, they, seven, in one, eight, and I don't think the county of the quarter, or our organization, and, um, E D C. Um, then, um, they, some people forgot that they were at this, we have an entrance audit for the, for the, for an entrance audit coming up, uh. Right now, we got an audit on our federal, federal funding, one year in the audit. So that was, um, part of the. And I left there, we, um, we got a a really, then it sounded like it didn't go for fast. They said, and I don't know, it seems we were a lot faster than us. There's not much in theory, in theory was that, uh, in the federal, was only looking at some things that the federal had and what we have to do. And, um, I also mentioned this about on this committee. I attended the twenty-one percent thousand tax meeting. And we're working on putting something together, present to the, to the county commissioner. Now, this is something he didn't, that the city can do, that he can do this, or the county can do it. And basically, what we're looking at is, but the city, the county can lead on this. Because it gives the, give us more money to, um, to do, um, pocket with and, and a couple of things we can deal with. And we had a Pacific County, who's united for meeting, and also the next one was transit. The Pacific County Transit Authority's meeting, so, so. That's pretty much mine, uh.
Hey, um, how much the citizens think we have forever?
You know, Chris, not, Ray, I don't know, there, anybody knows what's the cut? Anyway, um, I think I left off with the, uh, forest. And I may have said battery has some big, I can probably find that all together. Um, the sulfur that's in the air is a sulfur dioxide. And when you add water to sulfur dioxide, you get H two S O four, which is sulfur and gas. Which is, what's in mathies. Anyway, our water comes from the sky, when it hits the forest, we have acid rain. Acid rain, vegetation. And what it does, uh, what I've been told by law. And what it does, uh, what I've been told by lawyers is that the top of the tree gets a conch. Conch is a soft hobby that they go up and run through sawmills because it jams up their system. So they cut that part off. I guess they just chirp. Anyway. This conch also turns all the needles orange and rub off on the floor. And so if you get a lightning strike, it's almost like having a match on, just catching on fire. And then you heard of explosions, where if you have large areas of that, they get heated up and that explodes. And so you get a very vicious flare storm. And of course, this is happening in California. And after the, you fire it, then you have the rains and then you have a road. Okay. Now, one of the things that I've done in my 95, I planted a tree cooler up in the pine there already. Whereas they had taken and cut down all the pine trees. There was over 12 hills and they cut all the pine trees down. And some of our white people in Congress excited that we able to be harvested. Six years. So they decided they would be fired. That was true. Finally, this month, these six years ago. They find this. For it to, it can run with rice. So, well, the weather, so my head, portion, two high. Then we were washing up, saw a big spruce cow. They cut down all the wood screws for the control board. And the, made the wood light and strong for their rights. So they have that in, of all the groups in the part of that area. Down here, they've got all the cedar trees down. So we don't know where that cedar trees. Mills in the part of that. Central district. So it's gonna take a while to get all this back. Now, mention of bicycles up in the forest. Now, my information that I got was that all roads are blocked. Anybody in that forest, and they do not want to come. I'm sorry, everything is blocked. So someday, those trees are gonna die. We're gonna get, I don't need my people. Figure best clean up, that'd be a lot of your loss. But to get the people out, the people may cause fires. So we have over 50 miles of bicycles on this street. We got 30 miles of beach, over 20 miles of pavement for bicycles for the, that everybody that come down. So I don't see any reason, or you wouldn't even suggest, but bicycle parents up in the forest.
Anybody else in the audience? Okay, I understand. Skyler, you underhand that?
Hi. So I attend a lot of Zoom meetings, City of Long Beach, sometimes support commissioners, the county commissioners, and other local groups. And they're all understandable. I don't know what is going on with Owaco Sound, but literally, anybody in the audience, Larry, Dawn, and Jenna, and anybody up there at the table, you're indecipherable. I can hear about every 10th word. It's ridiculous. Something's gotta be done if you want citizen participation from people who, for one reason or another, can't attend in person. Zoom is a wonderful thing. You can get the citizens involved in a way that you've never been able to do before, but not if we can't hear you. And it's only Owaco City Council that's like this. So I really wish you could fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia?
Alicia?
Alicia? Can you hand it up?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, I think it's also worth a problem.
Okay. Um, I kinda have a lot to get through. So I just, um, I noticed that the, you know, in the beginning of the meeting, things were kind of amended. So, um, you know, some of this is not relevant to what we've already talked about in this meeting. And then some of it, you know, is talking about things that happened in other meetings. But it's my understanding that water and sewer connection fees are a way for the city to generate revenue. And I remember that back in 2021, there was a big thing where the rates were raised like 20 to 40% because the city wasn't able to pay for the updates and repairs to the water and sewer systems that were needed at the time. Um, some of the repairs were listed as things like improvements to the city reservoir, structural upgrades, repairing corrosion at the beams at the wastewater, wastewater plant. Um, the backwash basin improvements, and then even like a flow meter at the Indian Creek Reservoir. Um, it was estimated at that time that it was about $250,000 that the city didn't have beyond the grants that they had. Um, I'm wondering if that was already, those repairs were already paid for and completed. Um, cause it's 2023 now, and those rates are still in effect. I know that at the time, some council members were really wanting to roll back, um, those rate increases, you know, hopefully in the future sometime. Um, but it does seem like if we are foregoing revenue um, with the possible modification to Chapter 1304, Section 110 of the Owaco Municipal Code in terms of waiving connection fees, um, that could be a exceptional benefit, so to speak, as was written in that modification. Um, it seems like if we are, you know, foregoing those, you know, those revenue options, then there could be a potential for raising rates again, should we not have revenue for repairs or modifications in the future. Um, if the fees are waived for, say, the Dupe Building, that, you know, wrote a letter in their interest in this, will they then to be raised, you know, waived for the DJHCC coming up? And more importantly, would they be waived for the Panoramic Lifestyle Wellness Resort? Um, cause I wonder, does this create precedence that the city will then be waiving these fees for, for any project essentially? Um, I read through today's packet in the agenda. And there was the project study dated 7/1920, or 2023. And it shows that there is this, um, you know, this plan going in up at Discovery Heights, an undeveloped property there for 100-room hotel, 266 apartments, 154 cabins, and 96 single-family homes. Um, and what was of particular interest to me was on page six of, of the seven pages. It was saying that the city is already exceeding the TSS, which is the Total Suspended Solids. Um, and that the city's looking into this. And that by 2038, the permitted 85% of BODs, the, the tests that they do for that one, um, will also be exceeded. And it says that the city will need to prepare a plan and schedule to maintain adequate capacity for flows and loadings to the WWTP, the wastewater treatment plant. So these are things that definitely, obviously are gonna cost the city and coming up in the future. How does the city plan to raise revenue to pay for this? And can the council tell us how much estimated revenue the city will forego in waiving fees? On just an example, these three projects alone that I just mentioned today. Um, you know, because these fees, aren't they, aren't they essentially the cost of doing business? Um, is, you know, kind of my thought on this. And then, um, doesn't it seem like an exceptional benefit to the city to collect the fees? In essence, to kind of help support these upcoming expenses that we already know about? You know? Or is it the city's plan to raise utility rates again to pay for it? It's just, you know, something that has kind of, I guess, concerning me. And, you know, I just would like to remind the council that 18.9% of the people in this town are below the poverty line. That is 1.4 times the rate of the county and almost doubled that of the state. We are a poor town. And I'm just hoping that.
Pardon? Ms. Alicia, before you go, would you, um, is that your, your name, right? Alicia?
Yes.
Would you, uh, please clarify for me, what are your basic concerns? I'd like to be able to understand them clearly.
Well, my concerns are, is there going to be precedence set if the municipal code is adjusted? And.
Your time's up. Do you think you have a whole bar to read and give her answers or send anything else to the state?
I would like to have that answer, Mr. Mayor, because I cannot understand so clearly. And I would like to understand her main concerns.
Would you like me to email the city? You know, my, I guess my questions, they're questions I exa, I essentially just would like the council to consider when making these decisions.
I, I will, I will.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I have one question on this one. Are we going to be able to get to the end of the agenda this time? Because last, last meeting on the 10th, we were not able to touch on the last two items. And I'm particularly interested in the last item of, on the agenda, which is on the discussion, the item number four. And if, no, this would be the perfect time for me to re, to respond to, to, uh, our, um, citizen who just spoke.
No, it's, you can, we're gonna get through everything, we're gonna get through the last.
Okay, so if we are going to get to that, I'll, I'll wait until then. Thank you.
Okay, um. Any other, anybody else with comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Alicia, if you will, please email me. I would like to, uh, I, I agree with you on any of your points, and I'd like to continue this discussion.
Oh, she's here.
Oh, there she is. Okay.
Sorry, you guys, my, my computer and my phone have issues having, uh, sound. And so I'm trying to make sure I've got one turned off before I talk on the other one, so I don't make, uh, you know, too much noise.
I just, uh, yeah, this is, this is Matt. Uh, I was the, the sponsor of the amendment. I would love to continue this discussion specifically, uh, but offline, and that it permits us more time.
Sounds good.
Yeah, uh, Alicia, I would also like for you to be sure that you emailed me because I would like to also discuss particularly the TSS. Uh, since we know that those are the measurements that were taken were during the dry season. But in the winters, the capacity is very different than it is in the summer. So could you please email me, uh, you, um, council, um, position two?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
I guess that's it. We'll move on to, um, we have, um, no, don't build this side. 391, do it for me in the calendar. 392. There's a, to authorize the mayor to execute the DCP water check before the law. The trust can develop a testament of 9,000. This is before, because none of the trust teams are applying for master client to review the single travel warrant location. And, uh, 1740, payment route, level one. Locations are not within the service area of city stewardships, or required areas for the onsite subject system of OSS. This proposal will create a new town finding services by the DCP watershed group, 34 timing. This application will review a variant on OSS and a CFA check. This review, CFA checklist, among early required, still counseling, the OSS and the grade filling, grading filling of the slope parcel will involve more than 116 feet, not exempt from CFA. Uh, the, the task order is estimated at $9,000. The city has already collected the application fee of $1,375 uh, dollars, which will be directed towards the total project application. I signed and agreed, yeah, and signed and we paid fine plus 70. Association of Travelation. Uh, this, this was not required, we knew, uh, Josh Miller, Chris Perry. Is, is Gerald O'Neil, is who are both ladies. Mr. Mayor? I think we already had a house. This is right across the street from the Clar nose, uh, onsite subject. That was approved several years back. On the hillside.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was.
2018, I believe, yeah. There is an existing home there that has an onsite subject system that is owned by the Shanks. And so this would be adjacent to the other side of that.
Yeah, okay. I'm a little bit. Oh, sorry. We're moving to the second, and there's this. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote?
I cannot vote because I didn't understood or heard anything.
Okay. We got to understand. Um, now we're in business. Well, I'll ask our motion, our expert to execute with, um, DCP water check. The trust can develop it for an estimated cost of $9,000. So move it. Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Same as be, same as before for me. I couldn't understand.
Okay, um. The next one, is there a lot of things? This is, uh, this is, uh, for the mayor to execute amendment one, for the DCP water check task order, number one, amount of $15,000. There's a total estimated flying cost of $20,000 for the law. Think this would be bigger for the floor. The overview of this is, uh, the task order for assistance when the court go off of all tech. The original task order, estimated cost, not exceed $5,000 included work associated with initial step on the bidding process of the true application leaving. The limit increases to a total less than $10,000. Now, it's been assigned and accepted by hands of obligation clause with the master client, within the master client application. Also, we passed in the act of, or reimbursed with the date, the city has incurred $11,371 in flying. It's, uh, $11,271 in invoice to the court. Court gave $2,000, $2,250 in the individual, and $6,076 in initial fee. The July, the July invoice of, of $5,259 outstanding. And since the court gives that, they will pay that, so. The name is such one. What we're doing is.
Motion, move to business.
Second. For motion, the second, move to business, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote?
Which, which item, which item is this, Mr. Mayor?
Three.
Which item on the agenda is this, on discussion three? Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, I didn't get a vote from Councilmember Colomar.
But she's considered as a standing. Are you standing on this one?
Yeah, because I couldn't understand, you were unintelligible for the most part.
Yeah. On your, 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 your. Where do I stand?
Um, my, Mr. Mayor, due to amendment one to DCP water check task order, number one, the amount of $15,000 for a total estimated flying cost of $20,000 for the law.
Second. I will vote in the second for the mayor to execute the amendment. All in favor?
Aye. I oppose.
The stand is?
I would have to be one, I cannot understand.
Okay. Number four. And this is the one, number. This, this is to, um. This is to move the mayor to execute amendment number one, DOE agreement, W, W U C, that is twenty twenty-one, that is El Waco, that is two zero, that is zero zero two zero nine, to extend the act for date to date from June thirtieth to begin January twenty twenty-five. Didn't you think this is important?
No, this is for the Baker Bay Stormwater Improvement Project. We just recently did document.
There's no reason.
I know, they're similar.
Uh, Mariana, do you understand? This, this is, uh, this is amendment to extend the date for, for what we have, uh, in twenty twenty-one, the setting entered into a frank agreement, called additional funding on the Baker Bay Stormwater Improvement Project. Okay, um, the inception of this project came in twenty seventeen, with the National, whatever. Could you, you slow down, I stop a little bit, see if you can, if you understand through the hour.
Thank you so much.
The inception of this project came in twenty seventeen with the proposed, with the proposal for stormwater improvement under by the National, the National Resource Damage Assessment associated with the sinking of the Titan fishing vessel near drinking aid. The Lord Columbia Estuary Partnership then used the four thousand, one forty, four hundred fifteen thousand assessment as a map for the farmer's ecology grant in the amount of one million eight hundred forty-five. Uh, DOE awarded the grant in twenty twenty-one, expiration date of June twenty twenty-three. LCP applied for an extension to the end, to the end date of two additional years. The project is expected to be bid documented ready in the next month or two with its reference during the winter of twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. They're already planning to start sometime in September, but the last thing I heard. Now, I don't know. This is the project that the, with the sinking of the Titan, that is twenty, then we're able to circulate this water into, uh, the market project. And this happened back when I was mayor the first round. And what's happening is the larger cities are half completely under stormwater. So after runoff, basically, everything that this is gonna clean up is coming in the port. Then someday, someday, somewhere down the line, we're gonna have to end up cleaning our stormwater. And my idea was, hell, we're getting three months to go right now, through cheap rate. And now much taken, and they're gonna make us a project, looking to make it as a private project. So, um, anyway. Discussion, see, Mariana, go ahead, Mariana.
Uh, does this, uh, includes the technical memorandum from Gray and Osborne?
No, no, they have nothing to do with it. This, this is.
Is that a separate item?
Yes. This is a stormwater preparation deal. You can add a couple of things, artists, that the board.
Uh, so this, uh, this memorandum is not part of this discussion? Is that going to be separate?
That's just a notice for us. I don't, I, wait, no, that's not a discussion. It's a correspondence of critical. And that is item J one, and not I four.
Could Holly, could Holly repeat it? Because it's not clear, her, her phone, her, uh, mic is clear, but yours is not. Could she please explain and repeat what you guys said? Translate.
Explain what?
That is not on the agenda. It is on the, it is on the agenda for this.
Then why is it in the packet? Then what is the purpose of having it in the packet?
For transparency, the public can see what we are receiving and sending out to, uh, potential developers.
Okay, because I do have comments on that, and I would like to address them during this meeting.
Okay, that's the next item.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Second. Motion, the second, to move to business. Now, the, now, the vote, we said, the mayor to execute amendment on number one, the DOE agreement.
Point of emphasis, there, I do believe it is probable. Mr. Pam, the mayor that executed amendment number one, the DOE agreement, W two C twenty twenty-one, El Waco zero zero two zero nine, to send expiration date to period twenty twenty-three, January first, twenty twenty-five.
Second. The motion, the second, the mayor to execute amendment number one, the joint agreement. Now, yes. This is a simple question. May we presume that DOE has approved this extension from there, at least in concept?
Yes, they have approved it.
I assume that, uh, I misread something, wanted to be safe. Thank you.
Yeah, that's letter in the, in the package, it's from the DOE.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I'm, I, all in favor?
Aye. I oppose.
Talk to Epstein.
Okay, we have correspondence and written reports. And a brilliant, on for a technical member, water check tree with plant capacity, is a written report that's been sent to us, our information, that's information only at this time. So at this time, I'll, then, most people are, we're.
No, uh, I have comments on this one. Even if it is informational only, I have comments on that.
Mariana, Mariana, do you want to give it to us?
I can. I would like to make the comments that I have. Uh, I don't know, it's important because I keep on getting these questions from constituents. And one of it is what, at which cost, even if it is informational, this, uh, program, this proposed panoramic lifestyle wellness resort is going to cost residents? Because, um, those who have been around, like I, for so many years, remember Discovery Heights and the enormous cost that it was to residents. And it seems that this one, in some ways, is even, is a repeat of that Discovery Heights, and in some cases, even worse, because at least then, there was conversation among city council. And to me, this is the first time I hear this information of this report. And as I was reading it, I was wondering if that is why we had had that, uh, short run-through of the LEEDs, um, local, uh, whatever it is, I D S. And this is, i- if this also the reason why that report was written, that informational report, the LEED seemed to me to be a measure of protection for the city versus what happened, um, uh, with the original Discovery Heights development. However, if there, um, if this is going to be, um, of an exceptional value, then, uh, we need to know what exceptional benefit is in that in large measure, it would negate the protections of the LEED. And somehow, I don't think that El Waco has that kind of money, unless somebody, uh, would like to advance the monies in total for this project. And, uh, so those were questions, as I was reading through it, that if it came as an informational, um, report to the city is because something had to have been, uh, moving or happening. And, uh, it would be nice to, um, to be able to find out this so that they, they, we give the feeling that we are actually doing this business in daylight, and that we are shedding as much light as possible on this.
This amendment, Mariana, we are doing this in daylight. We quit accusing this city, and this town, this, this administration of hiding things. You get, you get on that goal, and you're trying to, you're saying we're hiding things is what we just did.
That is not what I'm saying. What I am saying is that that is the impression that people get, and we don't want to have, we don't want to perpetuate that impression. We want them to understand that we are trying to be, um, exceptionally clear with them, and that we want their input and participation, that we understand that they, there is nothing more sacred than an informed voter. And that we appreciate the fact that they are involved in their town and the livelihood of their town. And that's basically what I'm trying to say.
Okay, got you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
They have been blocking, yes. Definitely, the amendment, the thousand, that's, uh, two of the people from two Gerald, the thousand, the one.
Yeah, it does. Yeah. It's out, it's probably, though.
It's in the agenda packet, it's in the materials.
Basically, what they said is, this isn't gonna have any, when, when we build the third bathroom, the Chris, that's R B, and, uh, the second, uh, digester, or the fountain of the newest, again. All of this falls into what they planned about there. We're not really going over much of the past, there's gonna be a few more buildings being built than the original plan, but this isn't going over the original plan. That's three more. Yeah. So, I mean, by the time we get out there, it'll have a little bit, with all this development, we should have a little bit of money to, to do some different things, too. But what we can do is not, do security, like, get away from the. Why, you're, 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 you're all, we're in a situation. Mr. Mayor, may I, may I vote in that with your second? Good. Thank you.
And thank you for being so kind and putting up with my, uh, lack of clear, clear reception. Thank you.
Recording stopped.